It would fine, yeah.
Rob's gonna be coming through to do his final once over that in the Woodmore Road, the number six road.
Let's get a superhighway and Scott, go to their home.
I suspect that people will definitely go superhighway speeds on the road.
I was just putting somebody up on that Woodmore.
I knew that was gonna happen.
That's what I did the other morning, so I'm gonna get past me a little bit.
You know.
What about Brooke?
Yeah, whatever.
Now you're going too fast, so if you don't find him anyway.
Petroy.
Trees get him.
Trees is over there.
Keep it for you, I had to pay for that little car there. Looked like a...
Yeah.
Somebody comes up there and takes a lot of money there.
There's kind of a lot of money.
Tires, yeah.
Yeah.
Even as a teenager, I had to like buy my own tires and vehicle and all that stuff, so I didn't find a lot of joy in that.
Same here.
Blow one rear end out of your vehicle and learn your lesson.
Yep.
Not that I ever did that, of course.
Yeah, I got charged again. It sounded like theater. It's super low, but ain't it?
It's sometimes, yeah.
Yeah.
Kinda add you Robert when they watch, everybody missed each other.
You gotta go backwards and then drop it into gear.
They have more fun with that thing, I used to go up and down, someone will be up there with it.
The Volkswagen?
Yes. Wide enough.
Didn't drive that much in the cold, cold days, I bet, though.
No. Especially when you're weak in the mental. Either.
Now we know what happened to him.
That's not very nice, Louis.
I thought that was my man.
You got a whole country.
I am gonna give her a point for that one, though, that was pretty good.
Maybe I should sign this contract. Commune to order.
What we do is to declare the United States of America and the general republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Action on the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Vote. Any adjustments to the agenda?
I have nothing, sir.
Public comments, please state your name and the town that you're from. Lois?
Yes, uh, Lois, hi. He was the representative we were talking about, right?
Yes, one of them.
One of them, okay. We, I came up to register my car and the girls told me that the program that we had all signed up for, for tax reduction or, well, walking the taxes, had gone down the tubes. And they gave me the paperwork for the new program, which you'll have to hire somebody to figure it out, but anyway. And I asked tonight, or the two that were here, now I'm asking the rest of you, is there any way that the town could use monies from the casino and continue the program?
Well, that isn't really a state issue, it's a town issue, but the town, you'd have to bring that up to a town meeting and be approved by all the taxpayers, the town legislature.
Yep.
But it all depends on what we have.
So one of the things I cautioned Lois about when she brought that up is the fact that state law dictates when it comes to property taxes and interest, everything from interest rates, the foreclosure procedures and all of those things, they dictate the exemptions and so forth. So I would, I would be concerned on whether or not the legality of such a thing, so I would need to research that.
All right.
That's what he told me, and then he said that the board would have to give him a directive to research.
Authorization. Well, all I know is that on the stadium that I in vote against it, I voted for it to keep it and...
All the girls told me that right off the bat.
No, because at the end of the document, I see what it does for the taxpayers, you know, especially outlandish.
Well, I know that, I was here, just literally, Teresa registered my car, which didn't make anything, and two people came in and asked to sign up for the program.
Yeah.
And that's why I knew about it, and otherwise, nobody's told us that this program that we all signed up for doesn't no longer exist.
Well, they created a program, they didn't have the financing fund.
Oh, well, that they had.
Plus on top of that is there's a misrepresentation on how if you did your house down and you sold that house, the next house you moved to, even though it might be worth three or four hundred thousand, you're still paying the same taxes you did the last year. That wasn't the kind of, the meaning of the bill, that wasn't supposed to be who it was. It was supposed to be, you pay the tax here, but you move on, and you still get that same type of reduction, but you still pay higher taxes. A lot of people didn't, so you had, well, people in Cape Elizabeth and down in that area moving in a high-income house and paying the same taxes. And that is why.
Well, as I said, I really think that it was, I think the concept is good because there's a lot of people who do get out of their houses. We really don't have any senior citizens housing up there or moved anything. And I'm sure it doesn't get better going further on. And so I would say that, I still think it's a program that we should consider as a town, some way to, you know, try it. Doesn't have to be millions of dollars, which is...
What way do you have the cutoff?
Same cutoffs, but you don't, you just don't carry it through. If you wanted to make the longest tip, actually, just sit down with a pencil and a piece of paper, and you can figure out how much it's gonna cost you a year, and that, how many people, they all know, how many people in town are seventy-five and over and lived here, say, ten years, or whatever it was, and it, it's a mathematical thing that should be able to figure out, and I'm willing to bet it's really not as much as we really think it is.
Julie's trying to, um, Colleen, is it going to be replaced by another program?
Not as of now.
No.
Unless they come back next session with something different.
Yep.
They do have the, what do they call that? No, an impairment, but anyway, the two-hundred-and-forty-dollar one, that's what the girls have passed now. But it's, that's not a new program. That's been here right along, and that's another thing, you're really gonna have to start telling the people in the town what is available to them. Now, I don't know how you do that, but it's not doing anybody any good if nobody knows about it. It may look good to somebody on paper for their resume or something, but not for people that are paying the bill, so...
I don't know, but what paper are you getting as a replacement for this tax stabilization that you've given because that program was not replaced with anything?
No.
It's not replaced.
So what did you give her?
I, I believe what she's talking about is, is information that's on main.gov for, I should probably print it you out, something that was on main.gov. So you can go onto main.gov and there's programs there, Lois, and that's probably where she was directing you to. There's, there's a few programs.
Now, she gave me the form for the government, it's a, it's a IRS form.
Did she give you an HAF?
Tax credit?
Form or a tax credit form, she's not, she, she shouldn't really have any forms to, to give out. She might have just got on there and she's printed it out for you for informational purposes. But there's no replacement, I'll take a look at it and I'll explain it.
Well, it doesn't replace, you know it's near the amount, but it is a discount of whatever you wanna call it, if you're, you know...
She probably got on main.gov and just gave you a form to, for you to look into it. Now, there's forms that we have that, for like veteran exemption forms, so it could have been a homestead exemption that you had, but you didn't have, or veteran exemption, or that type of form that the town has that the state will write also, that will help.
Well, as I say, I just think that if you, if the state or the town, I don't care which it is, comes up with a program and we all sign up, you know, we don't all sign up, but a lot of us did, and then if I hadn't been registered in my car, I wouldn't have, and that wasn't in existence anymore. So you need to somehow communicate that the programs that your taxpayers are counting on
Yeah.
no longer exist.
And you, are you on the website at all?
No.
No, right, 'cause we, we put that on our main, Oxford main website.
So there's gotta be another means of communication somehow.
Amazon app.
We can publish anything that is submitted, so, like, I know Norway Town Office sends updates, just in like a press release form, do you guys see that?
We haven't put it down yet, but...
Do you have a newsletter?
Okay, so, I kept thinking that was it.
Yeah, take it, take a look at the Norway Town, Town Office section, it's just like a, I don't even remember if they do it every week, but they just, they just send updates to everyone.
Thank you. So it would be a good idea to get something out there in different formats to let the taxpayers in Oxford know that the tax stabilization bill that was passed by the legislature last year has been reversed and it no longer will exist, so.
We get one year. This year's still coming.
Did they find that by the end of the year?
That's what, the girls told me.
Yeah, they have, they have one year.
One year.
It, it's, that if you've already been signed up, they're gonna follow that, that next tax bill.
They got all...
This next tax bill coming up, will stabilize for those who have signed up.
Okay.
Anybody else have public comment?
Patricia Thomas, and I live on the Webber Brook Road, and I've been working for the last couple of years on trying to get that road cleaned up, people picking up their yards, not trash everywhere, and have been a bit unsuccessful. When you come home from dinner some night at nine-thirty, ten o'clock, and you see a rat running across the road, you should see some of these homes, and I, my, my husband and I have talked about selling our home. There is no way that I can sell my home with the Webber Brook Road looking like it does. And I have lived there for close to forty-five years, and it is absolutely horrible, and I need help. I, I'm upset, I'm angry, I have been working on this for two years, I don't get calls back. I sent a letter, and I started with Joelle. I happened to talk to Kingston on Monday afternoon, and I am very, very frustrated. And something needs to be done, and when I looked at the paperwork and it said code enforcement, unsafe property, code enforcement update, this town is not following the code now, so I'm not really sure about an update. Because if they were being followed, you wouldn't have five or six unregistered vehicles in your yard. You wouldn't have an ABC rubbish container that is overflowing. You wouldn't have mice, you wouldn't have rats, and that right there has turned into a health problem. And I am very, very upset, and I am going to start taking steps.
Questions? Is there, without giving a specific address, a window, four hundred to five hundred Webber Brook Road?
Mm-hmm, I've given Kingston three, but I had, um, this winter, given four.
So Kingston has that.
And there's some more up the street. I'm not going, you know, I'm pretty limited where I go, I come down the street and Pottle Road. Told Kingston yesterday diagonally from our lovely town office, there is probably four or five unregistered cars right on the corner. He said he had never seen that, which is fine. Right side of the Kimball's house, I am friends with Don Kimball, Mark and I stopped there. I walked his property. They can't use their outback because it smells of trash and rubbish, and I think that is ridiculous. They have so many vehicles in their yard, they now park on the street. Webber Brook Road is not that wide, so for you to, you have to slow down, you've gotta go, you know, out because they can't fit any more trash and cars in their yard. Down the street, same way. Independence Drive, end of Independence. If they have one car sitting out there, they got six, and they have the ABC rubbish. I was dog-sitting on Monday, and the woman came out and threw the trash in her yard because the ABC rubbish is full. I think this is horrible, and we have to figure out a way, because this is a health issue. And if I could sell my house, I would be gone by the weekend. And the sad part is Webber Brook has never been so bad as it is now, and I've lived there for forty-five years. And we have to do something.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Business Service, five point one, police and fire department capital request continued.
Uh, yes, at the last meeting, there was a discussion of the purchase of portable police radios and fire radios. Ultimately, the board, when we got to the fire radios, asked because of the purchase of multiple radios, if we could see if there was a better bid price, or not bid, but purchase price. Short version is that Deerego Wireless is already giving the state bid price on these items, so the price is as low as it can go. So if the board is open to purchasing of the fire department radios for five thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars, looking for that approval if that's still unpaid. The police ones were, were approved at the last one.
Well, that was just, we pretty much were in agreement that we would do it. At the time, we were just wondering if it was a bad deal with the guys, so I guess do it if a motion, I'll make a motion.
Second, motion second, any discussion? All those in favor? Vote.
Thank you.
Five point two, town facilities phone system upgrade discussion.
So at the last meeting, we had discussed the phone systems at the public safety building. Selectmen asked that to be looked at to do that, expand that for all town facilities, and it was asked to be placed on this agenda. I've been working with our contact at the, at the vendor for the phones. They put together a quote, what I just received yesterday, as you can see in your packets. There's a couple of things in the quote that, I had, that, these are internet-based, so there's a couple of things in the quote that I'm concerned about regarding internet access at, say, the town garage. And I just want to, before, before we move forward with this, I just would like to verify that the correct level of internet is available at those facilities before, before this moves forward. And I just didn't have time to do that before this meeting. So if the board is comfortable, I apologize, it's not ready to go tonight, but if the board's comfortable with tabling it until the next meeting, and I'll have those answers, and we can move forward.
Motion to table.
Okay.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor? Five point three, except four thousand dollar police department equipment grant from Walmart. Motion second, discussion, industry assistance limitations, I'm trying to think of, were you able to print that, or?
Yeah, I, I was, the chief was able to forward it, it's a little funky, it goes off the phone, but it, it just says for police equipment, it doesn't specify specifically what it is for.
All reviews.
All votes in favor? To vote?
Thank you.
Department who report?
So Kingston's here tonight to hit on two items. The first is an unsafe property that he's been addressing, and then the second is his code enforcement department update, so, Kingston?
Yeah, so the very first one is, this is where we're gonna go into two sixty King Street, right?
Yes, please, yeah.
Yep, so, actually, we have in the audience some people who are directly involved in this, I think since two thousand fourteen. This is dated back to CEOs now, I think even the board was involved with dealing with legal issues with this, and so this one's not full of Monte per se, we're not trying to take down the whole building, but we are trying to correct, if you can see the pictures, there's a void in the bathroom where the structure had collapsed. I think it was this winter, or was it last winter?
This one, I believe.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, so, the, the last notice that we gave was actually hand-delivered by our own PD, and that was May twenty-seventh, twenty-third, to the owner. Through our property maintenance ordinance, we were actually hopefully gonna be successful in having him repaired of his own volition. I believe right after he got the notice, a trailer had showed up right on the property as I was passing by one time, driving to do an inspection. I was pretty hopeful that he was gonna do it himself, that trailer has since left and it is still there. So I was gonna send the owner another notice saying we were gonna follow through with what we were saying we were gonna do on that notice sent on May twenty-fourth. However, before I did so, I sent it to Mark A. Bauer, our counsel, and he actually directed a better approach, and that's through the dangerous building law, which would allow us to, we have two options at this point, we can either correct it and send him a notice of it after the fact, or we can give him a heads-up that we're gonna correct it, whichever we choose, either we have the right, because I've deemed it as unsafe, and, and it's an issue for the health and safety of the public, 'cause it's an open structure. Anytime you have one of these, it's, it is a dangerous building, and, you know, State Farm Marshal's Office has actually given us clear instruction that we should do everything we can to either abate them, demolish them, what have you. So I've talked with the gentleman that does our mowing, 'cause he's kind of a jack-of-all-trades. He gave us a quote of eighteen hundred dollars to board it up, cover it up, make it look somewhat prettier than it is now, and seal the issue, and clean up the mess. And we have the right to do that, even without even notifying, because it's a hazard to life and property of the public of the town. So that's where we're at with that.
Kingston? Just to clear, I'm sorry.
No, I'm fine.
Just to clarify for the board, when we say correct it, we're talking about sealing up that end of the home, right? Or that end of the structure, we're not talking about rebuilding anything, or we're just talking about sealing it up, right?
Removal of the debris, if you see the pictures, you'll see there's a pile of debris, actually, this picture doesn't do it justice 'cause for some reason, some of it got stacked in a meter pile, I think, but, maybe, yeah, I don't know. There's, there's, there's some weeds growing in, so I think it looks prettier now, but the object is to clean, remove, and then board up the openings, and the gentleman that's gonna do the removing had the idea of just boarding up the whole area, just so that it's not, you know, interior view that we can see, and make it prettier for, for the complainant, basically, you know, and to secure it, obviously, that's the primary goal.
Has the person that owns it, they agreed to do it once?
Well, they...
Doesn't want anything doing to that, or what?
Well, they, they actually agreed to fix the issue at that cause, which I believe the select board was involved back, like, many years ago. He ended up putting a roof on it, and that took care of the structural issues, and the town, I think, went to court three different times, and they ended up, like, following, not following through with that and saying that was okay. But this is obviously where it's at now, and so this is, this is not that, we're not trying to, you know, demolish it again, we're just trying to take care of this one issue.
Has somebody lived in it?
Nobody, nobody's been living in it.
Nobody's been living in it.
Have you seen the cost of the eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred dollars, I don't know if we've gotten anything in writing yet, but that's how the theoretical quote is gonna pay for that.
So we, the way it works is we can lien the property, so the town would have to front the cost, and then the property would be leamed. So if this person went to sell the property, there would be a lien against it, so it would be clear title, that's our only recourse, so that's why we're here tonight.
That needs to be done, this has gone on way too long, and it never should be coming back here. I've been on the board at least twice when this issue's come here, both when Joelle was here, and now, and it needs to go away, and a correction needs to be done. So I think the town needs to do whatever it has to do and pay whatever we have to pay to get it taken care of and lien that property under the law that allows us to do this. And if he doesn't need to be notified, then don't notify him, because he's had long enough to take care of this. I live on that street, this couple here lives right next door, and I can tell you, if I lived next door, I wouldn't be as quiet as they've been. It needs to be taken care of.
They've been very good about getting in contact with me and checking in on me, keeping me aware of, of kind of the status of it, 'cause I can't be everywhere at once, as you know, so, they've been kind of good about that.
So I, that would be my recommendation, did you want...
Is this guy gonna pay his taxes on it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the taxes that...
Kingston, if I may?
Yeah.
Did you, did you talk about there was some tax statute that, that, that could be levied against this house?
Well, that, that's essentially what this is, but it's only the cost of the, the work that we're, that we would be using town funds for. In fact, that's actually one of the items that the lawyer has given us step by step, that through this law, that's the only avenue we actually have.
Just for a lady?
Uh, yes, if he doesn't pay us back, we, we actually send him a bill, and then if he doesn't pay in thirty days, then we can assess it as a special tax.
Oh, okay, all right, thanks.
Is that a motion, Sharon?
It is a motion.
Start it.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Does this build a structural design? No.
That, I haven't...
It wasn't when I backed when I was by chief, 'cause I condemned this building.
It wasn't, there were three structural engineers that went through back in whatever that was, two thousand fourteen, and deemed it not safe. Scotty Owens, I don't know what happened.
There was some debate about the roof going on, but they, I think it was two structural engineers that went in and said, no, it's not safe, it should be...
Wake up every morning in my, in our lovely home that we keep up and try to keep the town looking great by doing so, and look out, look at that eyesore every day.
So, maybe the other avenue we can take, too, is have someone look at that building, and if it's declared unsafe, then there's another step that can be taken as far as taking it down.
Can we, have we condemned?
Yes, you can do that, through that same step.
That's also an option, too. A little bit more expensive of an option, but yes.
But, you can still lien the property.
Through the dangerous building law, yeah?
Through the dangerous building law. And, like Scott said it, it was condemned when he was unsafe, when he was fire chief. But, I would even go so far as to say that that should be probably the first thing we should do, rather than just board it up, because that's not going to solve any problem. That building's still going to be there, it's still going to be unsafe, it is, and it's still going to continue to deteriorate.
Can you have the State Fire Marshal's office help you with that?
Technically, I think we just can hire an engineer to give us an opinion, because for whatever reason, when the roof went on it, I think the board at the time decided that was fine, so we can just have another engineer go in, get another report, take that report, use that as evidence. Because I'm certainly not going to go in there right now and just poke around and hopefully fall through the ground, you know, so...
The original reports, Kingston, you go another round?
I believe, I actually found a file that was misfiled, that is two inches thick of other stuff, and I actually didn't have a chance to go through it, but in the regular file, it's only about a half inch thick, I did see it in there, it's probably in the two-inch thick one.
So, when you were fire chief, if it was condemned unsafe, in that manner...
We were talking about tearing it down, having it torn down.
So, does it, is that still good? Would that original report still stand?
Probably not, because when I condemned it, the town allowed him to put the roof, you can see the roof sag, and it's like, I ain't going inside there, I'm just going to condemn it as it sits, because it's, I mean, there's been nothing done to that house for years, and I don't see anything happening to that house in the number of years it's been there, so either we deal with it, or, I mean, there's not that one, there's a couple others in town that we need to deal with, and one's the right man, the right department.
Yeah.
So...
So, I would, I would support taking that measure versus...
So, we got a motion in the second?
Yeah. I'll withdraw.
Withdraw your motion.
And I'll, I'll make the motion that we, we have the property looked at by an engineer to determine the status of being unsafe. And if it is, then proceed with...
Who, you want to withdraw the first motion? I mean, it says a point two thousand, and then there is...
She didn't withdraw that one.
I did, I'm sorry.
Huh?
I did withdraw.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You want to withdraw your second?
I did, I did withdraw my second. Good.
Hey, can I ask you a question? If we need to condemn a house, what happens then? Can you just tear it down?
I don't know the process, I don't know, Kingston?
If it's similar to what we are saying, is the opening being dangerous to the property, we can treat it the same way as we would this small section, just demo the whole building, and send the bill to the owner, and if they don't pay, then we can assess it as a special tax.
And if they don't pay the tax, then...
Then tax is closed.
It'll go through the lien and ownership process.
Well, I think that's after a few years, unfortunately, but...
Is it mortgaged?
Yeah.
I haven't dealt with it.
Sorry, say it again?
Is it mortgaged?
That, I don't, I believe he's the sole owner, I think, the individual that owns it.
I think if I remember right, yeah, I don't think there's a lien holder on it at all.
Yeah.
So, Sharon had a motion to look into the condemning.
Start with it.
Any other discussion? The both in favor? Keep us informed on that process, too.
Yep.
I don't want it to take six months.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so, that one, so, an update as far as, hold on a minute. So, to respond to the public comment earlier, I've got a list of the four, and there's more than four, honestly, and I deal with these pretty consistently. So, the four that were mentioned, I had actually had a chance, there was one of them that I had stopped by June 1st. This was, this was something that I had found the owner outside, and so I stopped and talked with this gentleman, and told him, gave him a verbal, said, what's going on? He's mentioned that he had a garage, and it collapsed, or one of those tarp garages, and it collapsed, and that's why he was seeing that, and I told him he ought to clean it up, and if he doesn't, I'm going to send him a letter for thirty days. So, I'm going to have to send that letter, because it's still, still a mess. He's basically treating his yard as the garage, without actually having the garage, as well as a trash can. So, that's, that's a property maintenance issue that I'm going to be sending a letter to. Another one on Webber Brook, I had spoken with him, he's actually a, kind of not doing too well, an old Vietnam vet, gave him a verbal that he ought to at least take care of a few of his vehicles. He mentioned that he didn't have anybody young enough in his family that would be able to help him, and he'd do what the best he could. I just straight up gave him a verbal, I didn't say, didn't threaten him with a thirty day, his health wasn't too well, so I wasn't going to hit him when he was down. The other one down the road on Independence, I actually stopped and talked to that owner, gave her my card, and she was very, very frustrated that I was even there, that I even showed up, and that's not really my issue, I'm going to send her a letter, if she doesn't clean it up, I told her to give her a week, because it was, it was pretty bad, there was like five vehicles there, right in the front, there's an island in the loop of that location, and the dumpster was overflowing, which she said she hadn't paid the bill, but was hoping they would still come pick it up anyway. I've had a few that came in that have nothing to do with this, that actually, one of those is a dangerous building down on Fourth Street, which, that's, that's actually, has, actually has metal roofing coming off and landing in the road, so that's kind of a high priority. A lot of these, I take them as kind of a patients by precedence, you know, if they're bleeding out of their extremities, I kind of take care of them quick, that's a high priority, that just came in today. I've got a list here that dates back to 2022 that I've been keeping an eye on, a couple junkyards, a couple from our, one of our local junkyard recyclers, who, he's been keeping me on, on my toes about, some of the people that I've, I've actually had issues with, I've sent a letter recently to a, this one dates back to the prior code officer. We had an issue with the owner not being alive, and we had a wrong address, and now the deed has been corrected, so I have a good address for them, and I did send this to them July 24th. That, that's an address in Utah, and the owners, sorry, the occupants are kind of into racing, if you will, and so they have a lot of junk debris from race cars, and the neighborhood's not really pleased with them. That's a Kylie Avenue issue. You probably haven't been forwarded this, but again, it's pictures with color and...
Last one down on the right.
Uh, second to last one down on the right. But that one, they've been, they've been sent this, and we will probably, hopefully get certified mail back, assuming that everything works well with the address, because like I said, we've had issues with the address. In fact, the prior code officer tried to no avail even notifying the owner because of the address, so I think this one will stick, but that one's, that one's still pending. And, you know, as, as the public comment has kind of aired the grievance on, yes, this is certainly an issue, and it is something that I do take seriously, and like, like the King Street residents in the audience have, have kind of kept me, you know, constantly updated on it, I didn't necessarily always get that from Ms. Thomas. It wasn't constant, it was, I think I heard from her when we were in the old building, maybe once or twice, I did mention I would call her back if I had any updates. Fortunately, that fell through the cracks, and the last time I talked with her, or the most recent time we talked with her was Monday, gave her an update, felt like we had an understanding, and I believe, you know, we're here tonight so that she can hear that understanding again. So, that's where I stand.
Not to bring up any bad topics, but how do we, how do we make out of the other ones over on the other side of town?
Uh, the, was it three?
You had the one right there by the railroad tracks, and then you had the one up on top of the...
Nine, Whitmore, and then three, is it 301, or 311 Robinsons?
322.
Three, yeah, yeah, that, uh...
I've never been going up quite a lot, though.
That gentleman actually cleaned it up, the double mobile home with the race car and the tires, he came in of his own volition, right after the property maintenance ordinance came down, and he just didn't want to have anything to do with that ordinance, so he just did it, took it upon himself. The nine Whitmore, I can't remember the lady's name, but she, Dolores, she, she had a building permit recently, two building permits, actually, one for a deck that she was rebuilding, and then a shed, because she's going to put some of the stuff that is accumulated on her yard hopefully in one of those sheds.
I think most of it's still me, huh?
Yeah, yeah, that's, those are kind of constant revolving issues, but there's, as you know, I've named probably ten, there's probably thirty.
There's another one right there before you, you know, you stock the road before you get to where the quarry is.
Right, I think ninety, ninety-one?
That old trailer that's in there, man, it's getting more and more garbage in there by the week.
I see they have garbage all stacked up by the tree, but the road, and then they can tap right over it, so...
Truth be told, there probably could be another dedicated code enforcement officer for just property maintenance issues. I'm not trying to put that on the town to have two code officers, because that's expensive. But, I am, I am going to be pursuing these more, obviously, as we try and flex our property maintenance ordinance muscles, as we've learned, we can't really flex some areas that we thought we could flex. We're probably going to have to fall back on dangerous building law for the buildings, but the junkyards, junkyard law doesn't work as it really should, like the dangerous building, we can't necessarily go in and clean it up, the dangerous buildings, we can't. So, it's kind of a learn, you know, kind of testing waters with how these ordinances actually work, and we kind of just got to trial and error with them.
Didn't we just go through one?
That's what he's referencing, don't you?
Yeah, so, the property maintenance ordinance...
We know the, that, I remember, because you have to have something to add some teeth in it.
Well, and it does, because...
Lost teeth.
Well, it's more like, it's not a full set of teeth, it's like maybe three teeth, so you don't really get a good bite, so, in talking with the lawyer, for instance, the dangerous building situation, I thought through this ordinance, we could utilize that and kind of do it a little easier through the ordinance, but he just says, just do it through the law, and I thought the same thing applied with junkyards, and it doesn't necessarily work that way. And so, the junkyard process, unless it's a health hazard, the health officer role is, I've actually had success down on Burns Road, I think they had a young girl that was being negatively impacted, they actually, I actually got her out of the house, so that's actually a successful story. But, usually if it involves children, those are high priority ones, too, that I deal with, so...
So, the dangerous building law, actually, for any municipality, has a lot more teeth than what we had put in our ordinance, and we actually didn't know that at the time, that we would have more teeth in that, because that was one of the issues I had with building that ordinance up, so that we would have more authority to do, to take care of these problems. All we had to do, and, I mean, I've been through this, all we had to do was fall back to the state law, and that's what we need to do now. In any case that you have, I would use your authority as a code officer to utilize those state laws for the dangerous building, and just do it.
Right, right, yeah, and as I said before, dangerous buildings, it's probably a third of the thirty that we have, so, I guess the one good thing about the property maintenance ordinance is it does put the residents on notice, most people don't care what a state law says. An ordinance, an ordinance does kind of put them on notice that, look, we're going to be pursuing this, and like I said, somebody, a few people have actually taken it upon themselves to do it, but I do, I do kind of have to be everywhere at once with these, and that's pretty difficult, I would run around like a chicken with my head cut off, just catching up on inspections, of course, following the speed limit, of course. But, it is, it is difficult in a day to do everything at once.
And, I'm not saying that, that you don't do what you're supposed to do, but what I'm saying is that I just think that we need, there needs to be follow-up, and it's not just you, it's prior code officers. It's, we have to make sure that these things are followed through to the end, so that we're not looking at them nine years later.
I, yeah, I agree.
Like this case here on King Street.
I agree, and I will say to the defense of code officers in my, in my realm, we are dropping like flies, and the new ones coming in aren't so eager to come in, so there is a void in this, this type of role, so it's, this is a problem statewide, it's not in this Oxford.
I realize that.
I know you do, Sharon.
So, thanks for that report.
Can I ask, on road maintenance, on maintenance, property maintenance, if you find, you know, all this junk laying around, so, okay, you send them a letter, and if they don't do anything, where's, where's the teeth in that, I mean, what do you do then?
Usually, it's through state law, like, if it's just on their, on their, on their yard, we, we just have to go through the legal process generally, make sure we're, you know, hearing from our lawyer, making sure we're doing the next step that's right, because that's really ultimately the avenue that we're going to be attacking this from, unless, of course, it's a health issue.
Okay, but it's a health issue, maybe it's just, well, a lot of garbage laying around and rats going through it, is the health issue?
Right, right.
So, what's...
Well, then, usually you'd have to show some kind of evidence that there's a rat coming from a property, usually I can take that, I can't just say, hey, there's a rat across the road, well, where's that rat coming from? You know, there's got to be proof somewhere, and usually a written complaint referencing where these locations are, some of the locations I've been referencing, I just got the addresses just recently, so it's kind of hard to pursue, if I don't know exactly where to look.
Right, no, I understand your problem, but I'm just saying, what, if you find it, what, what's the remedy, what is the, are you giving them some kind of fine, are you, I mean, what are you doing if you find this?
I think what she's driving at, Kingston, maybe you could just kind of jump on with the process, you know, you give the thirty day notice, and then the following thirty day note, you know, at what point does it get to the point where we're going to court?
So, so, through that process, at the moment they're notified, through state law, there's a per day violation if they neglect to do it, and if it goes to court, and the judge finds them liable that they did neglect it, we can charge them that fine per day. I believe it's fifty dollars to two, two thousand five hundred dollars per day, depending on how negligent the judge finds them. Of course, these court costs and these fees usually are not desirable by the town, but I think once we've learned how to properly navigate how to do it, we'll be successful.
Thank you.
One of the things on June 1st, you gave a verbal on the trailer, and here we are, August 1st, and a letter has not been sent. I have called the town, I have called Kingston, I have not gotten calls back. I saw him Monday, one of the things that really took me back is he told me that he does not call people back. So, we need to figure out, and that is a health risk, whether a rat was coming from that house or not. You walked down the property of the Kimbells, how do they have to live like that, when the property in that trailer, the trash starts at the back of the trailer and goes to the back of the property, and that is not a health issue? I stopped walking by that place, because it smells so bad in the summer. That has to be a health issue.
To speak to...
And if I don't get, if I don't get a call back, gave me his card, I'll start emailing, but that's not right. I have been working for two years, now my feet are in, my feet are in the mud, and I am not going to stop. If I have to call every channel, six, eight, and thirteen, and have them come wherever and talk to me, this is going to start happening, that's how upset I am.
Kingston, will you say something?
So, the comment about not calling people back, I find that extremely misrepresented, so I said I don't always have the opportunity to call complainants back, especially when it's a broad complaint, saying, go look at Coldwater Brook Road. I'm sorry, I'm not going to call you about Coldwater Brook Road, I don't have the authority to clean up Coldwater Brook Road. I do expect that people do kind of, if you let me finish talking, please. When someone usually gives a complaint, like the neighbors at King Street on 260 King Street, they usually keep in contact with me, and they do have an email... Uh, when someone usually gives a complaint, like the neighbors at King Street on two sixty, King Street, they usually keep in contact with me and they do have an email thread and that makes it a lot easier. Never once have I seen an email from Ms. Thomas, never once actually have I even gotten a letter from her, as she said, never once have I had a voicemail since June first from her. First time I heard from her in two years, since two thousand one, the old building, was Monday. It's completely unfounded, the anger that I'm actually receiving from her and saying that I'm doing something wrong.
That's good, um, I have a feeling I'm probably gonna hear from her frequently going forward.
I understand that.
Um. Anybody have anything, questions? And I'd like to see a very thorough list of, I don't know how long it'll take, Kingston, whoever to prepare this. All the properties that are, we believe are unsafe or health hazards or just need general work and prioritize that list top to bottom. Worst ones at the top and we'll start probably working on them. Maybe an update from you with each meeting going forward, not on the whole list, but what we're at on improving.
Yeah.
So Dana, I'm just gonna add this for the board because Patty Thomas did contact me in June, I brought that complaint here. She did contact me again in July, I again brought that complaint here and nothing, no callbacks had gone to her. Um, her complaints did start two years ago. Um, the reason it's here tonight is because I asked again in July that there be an update on this. I would like to see a report every week on the status of all these properties. I understand there isn't forty hours in a day, but I also understand when taxpayers and residents call, they expect to be updated on what's happening. And that does need to be followed up. And I'm not gonna say anymore about that right now.
Who else? Anything else from code enforcement? Go ahead, sorry.
Just a quick question, is, is it possible that there is another code enforcement position posted? It'll cost money, but.
Not at this time, we haven't, we're budgeted for one code enforcement officer. Town manager's report.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so for the town manager report, just a couple of things, I'll make you free. There's some discussion about referendum town meeting, done some research on that. Uh, forward to do some information from the town's attorney, uh, so forward to do some information from MMA Legal. Um, for instance, MMA Legal states that, uh, the selectmen do have the authority if they would like to entertain going to a referendum type town meeting. Um, I've included the information on, on those items. So, uh, the reason I'm bringing that up again is what's been a topic of discussion. Is this something that you would like, meaning you, meaning the board, is this something that you would like the manager to look into further? To look at, um, you know, what a potential ballot would look like, um, or is this not something that is of interest? If it's not of interest, then I won't.
What would be, uh, before we talked about this of like in November, maybe putting that question out for the people? I mean, I realize we get the authority to do it.
Yep.
And I know some people feel very strongly about not doing it. I mean, I'm, I'm game with it the way it has been, but we don't get any turnout and if you spend five million dollars in twenty minutes with forty people in one, it doesn't seem like that's a real good representation. That's just my opinion.
There's no reason that we couldn't put a, like a non-binding referendum question on in November, cause we're gonna have a town ballot anyway for the K House issue. We could put a non-binding thing on there that just says, uh, do you favor, you know, word, you know, do you favor a referendum town meeting for this coming June or something to that effect?
Rather than the, rather than the.
Open town meeting.
Yeah, than the old, actual town meeting, yes.
Well, you know, I'm the other way. I think it's good to have an open meeting, even though it's only fifty people, that's not the problem, it's not the fault of the people that show up for town meeting. There should be another way to be able to get more people to turn out. But I mean, so what you're saying is that the people that do take that time, that do take their time to turn up to town meeting, don't matter, they should go to a referendum, I don't agree with that. I agree, it's set with the old system, open meeting, people ask questions, they get answers.
I have to support that too. We have a town meeting form of government and, um, I, I have never supported the idea of voting on the budget on a referendum ballot. When you're at town meeting, that's the time to ask questions about the budget and the attendance is no different here than in any other town. Attendance has dropped over the years and it doesn't matter if it's on a weekend or a night or a weekday, it's all the same. I've been involved in towns that have had weekends, uh, weeknights and it doesn't matter when you have it, you still have the limited vote. And yes, more people do show up when it's time to vote on any ballot because of the referendum, especially if there are state issues on the ballot. But I support keeping the, um, our form of government by voting on the budget at an open town meeting.
What kind would it be to put it out there and ask the people?
Why wouldn't we?
Well, cause I don't think you have the only opinion here, seems to me, definitely.
I know, but I'm just saying, why wouldn't we? Give me the right answer, right?
Why would you?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you've got fifty people at your meeting.
Yep.
And you wanna come in and build a new building for the town office, whether you really want them, but if you bring your forty-nine people with you, you're gonna get it.
Is that what you're saying, is because you're saying the people, if.
I'm just saying it's a very poor participation for the number of people in this town to spend, you spent five million dollars, forty people showed up and it was all over in thirty minutes.
But it's an open meeting, anybody.
It is an open meeting, Caldee, you go to an open meeting, I run my mouth, you run your mouth, I'm not arguing that with you at all. But the average person will want, put their hand up at a town meeting and speak their piece. They'll give me hell after the meeting of what I should have done, but they won't stand up in front of there and I also, if, when it comes to voting, some people are gonna vote by the person that's beside them. If you're in that booth all by yourself, there's only one person that's gonna be doing the vote.
But what do you know about the budget if you're going to the booth?
Well, you're gonna have to have some means to inform them, I'm not, I'm not saying.
Budget meetings and nobody shows up.
So the only people that go to town meeting are really the people that have been involved for years and go. And when you see somebody new going to town meeting is because there's a contested issue that's coming up to be voted on sometimes.
I'm just saying that your average young person hasn't paid attention to it, they're not gonna take a Saturday and go do that. And you s- you know, if we continue, expect different results and we continue down the same road, it ain't gonna happen.
It's gone.
If everybody's happy with it, we'll leave it the way it is.
Well, only three of us have given our opinion so far.
I, I feel that, I think we ought to put it to the townspeople because I, I have to agree with Floyd that it isn't a true representation of what the town people actually want. When it's only fifty people out of four thousand plus.
But is there, we advertise it, everybody knows when there's town meeting.
And I get that, but.
People, so.
Just my feeling.
Question, so Wendy, Adam, if you know, how many people came out to vote in the last two elections?
Was it like a hundred and fifty?
Hundred and sixty.
So, a hundred and fifty, but we're not gonna have a budget on a November ballot where there's, and, and we've all seen how the ballots go. If it's a presidential election, we get twenty-five hundred people trying not to vote.
But you don't vote in November yet.
I understand, you're gonna be voting in June where you may have primaries maybe every other year. Um, but this past year, this past June, there was a hundred and fifty people that came to, to vote. Um, still not a very good representation. I'm not saying. I like the town meeting style of voting in.
I didn't say I didn't.
But I agree, I think we could put it to the voters and I think we should put it to voters. But I think the thousand people that came out to vote in November, nine hundred and fifty of them don't show up at town meeting and probably a lot of them wouldn't even know what the town meeting's all about. But they're gonna vote, leave it the way it is.
I'm just, I give you, you ask my opinion, I give it to you.
And I, I think we've all given our opinion, um, I, I'm split, I don't know. When do we need a decision? What, what do you need to know for this November's? The ballot must be coming soon.
Yeah, thirty days out.
Yeah, but E S and S, you know, looking at it, what I've already put in.
Do we have two weeks for our next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd like to see this on the agenda for the next meeting.
August seventeen.
Talk to some people and get their feel on it.
Do you want me to try and draft a, draft a sample, uh, you know, referendum question on this so you guys can at least see some language on what that might look like or?
Also.
I mean, I don't, if you put it out there and they vote it down, then we keep it the way it is. I don't know really what anybody would be scared about putting it out there.
I don't think anybody's scared, I don't think anybody's scared about putting it out there. We were asked what our opinion was and we gave our opinion, period, of keeping it as an open town meeting or having a referendum to vote on the budget. And you mentioned a five million dollar building. We would never put that at an open town meeting to be voted on that way, we had a referendum.
It was a.
You know, I know, but that's not a good.
It wasn't, I wasn't, I didn't really think I had an answer to it, I'm sorry.
How did this come about?
It started when.
We, we, at the meeting, at the meeting, after a town meeting, we complained that nobody was there, it took thirty minutes, we spent a lot of money.
And you get sixty people out of four thousand show up?
I think we had, yeah.
Yeah, there's, you know, two hundred people show up.
And I, I think to the credit of the town manager, and this is a town manager thing because the town manager is the one that does the budget. And when the town manager puts a budget together, that you're sitting there and you, there are no questions to ask because he, he's been so thorough in getting the budget out there. So he explains everything so good and I think a lot of, especially young people, they don't even know what town government is all about.
Who's trying to get some of them in on this?
You're not going to, I can tell you that right now.
Well, then we might as well jump out of the boat now, right?
Can we, can we, when you, when you bring this, when you bring this back, can you bring up, can you find an example of what a town budget would look like on a referendum?
I can do that.
Cause it's not all one, it's gonna be.
No, I mean, it'd be individual.
And what happens if they vote that down in June and the budget's supposed to start in July, the process?
Should be the same process as though they voted it down at open town meeting.
You have to go bowing for another vote.
What is it, another ballot vote? So now you're gonna have a special?
You're gonna have to have another ballot vote if that's how you voted on it.
Yeah.
And there's so many days, cause Gorum just went through that.
The lady in the back kept questioning.
I was just gonna comment, I'm one of those young people that doesn't show up to those meetings and I apologize. And it is, it's a lack of ignorance of what you do on a daily basis and the, I think our whole society is that way right now. It's we all expect everything and we don't want to be involved. I'm sorry to even say that out loud, but that's who I am, um, so there is guilt here.
So what do, what would you feel about the question?
Jeez, I'm embarrassed. I, I, I don't, I think going to the town meeting, well, it used to be this social event and it used to be a place where, you know, you knew what was going on. I don't, I don't, so I don't have an opinion, I don't have a right to have an opinion on it as far as I'm concerned. Um, and by not going, I'm not educated on what I should be educated on and that's on me and that's on.
So, would you, would you be educated if you went in a booth and?
No, that's what, no, that's what's not, that's that blind, geez, what am I doing here? Yeah, I, it's, you know, I'm.
And you're gonna look at the number, you're gonna look at the number while they're asking for.
I typically go, yeah, they need to ask.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, I know I'm not the only one, I'm, I'm just being honest, you know?
Did Harrison went through this where they stopped holding it and now they do it again, so if anybody wants to.
They went away from town meeting and then they?
Yeah, so there's precedent to.
They've gone back to it?
Yes.
And they did the same thing in Freiburg, they went to a ballot vote, it didn't work, half, I'm not gonna say half, but several department budgets were voted down. They could not start the new, uh, budget year because they didn't have the money to operate. So then you have so many days that you have to wait before you go back again and they quickly got rid of that referendum vote and went back to open town meeting. So.
Do it the way you guys do in the gas, vote where?
So I like, I mean, as a young person like Caldee, we grew up from our parents. We grew up from our parents being involved in town government. I love town government, so does Caldee, but we grew up with it. I mean, I didn't even grow up around here where he is, but I, that's how we came into it at our age. I've made my kids growing up involved in it, just like Caldee has. But if you're not involved with that as people of our generation, then you don't have any idea what it's about. Do they teach municipal government, town government school anymore? No, they do not. So, so this is why to preserve town government is, I think is very important.
It's kind of a buddy to buddy type system, you know, it's like grab everybody, show up to.
I was thinking it might try to prove it, I, I didn't think about preserving anything.
You know the way of everything was, well, to come up with an app.
Oh, we had the next one?
Yeah, get in on a nap.
The other updates for the town manager.
Alright, well, that was an interesting discussion. Um, so, yes, so I wanted to give another couple of updates here. One is regarding the town revaluation, um, that's moving along. Um, we are supposed to be closer to completion than we are, they have asked for a short, a few week extension, which I'm comfortable with moving on, moving with the extension. Uh, they have provided, and I've given you that, the copy of the new schedule. It's still going to be done in time for us to do our commitment on time, still in time for us to get the tax bills out, all those kind of things. They just needed a few more weeks to, to start doing the notices and informal hearings and so forth, so that's moving along, um, as it should be. Another item on this, uh, piece two is we had talked about assessor, assessing hours and so forth. I am planning on, uh, going ahead and I wanna advertise for an assessing agent, um, moving forward, just to start seeing what we, what we get for interest. Um, but I think we're gonna need to have a conversation probably about more assessing agent hours than we already have, so. Pismo Beach retaining wall, the engineer, as we talked about the last meeting, is now going to start the design and surveying phase, so that can be taken care of. Uh, two oh seven waste, the contract was signed and he's going to be, I get, I believe he's already getting started now. And then I also just wanted to make notes, back on July seventh, there was an incident that occurred that the Oxford Police Department was called over to assist Norway um, with a homicide that had happened over there. And they just wanted to give a, a, just a shout out to the police chief and Brandon Korea and Andre Chase, they were the Oxford officers that went over to Norway. Um, they were faced with a pretty dangerous situation, the suspect was still on scene, um, had a dangerous weapon. The long story short of it is, uh, Oxford officers were able to engage the suspect and with non-lethal force were able to subdue him and get him in custody. So, um, though there was a homicide that occurred, they were able to, uh, to remediate the situation without further loss of life. And I think that's worth, uh, making note of, I think they did a, did a wonderful job there, so I just wanted to note that. Other than that, that's what I have, uh, fourth and ninth, thank you.
Selectmen names. I didn't mail you about that, some equipment, I don't remember if I emailed everybody or not.
You did.
Just curious as to what's going on with that.
So the sewer jetter, um, I, I followed up with Jim, the highway foreman on that. So my understanding is it has been being used for sewer related things, but not for highway related things. It will, however, now that I've had some discussions about it, it will, however, be using for culvert clearing starting next week.
I was actually just asked this about an hour before the meeting. But the Pismo Beach building, where the concession stand is and there are two bathrooms there. So, when voters are coming in at night down to Pismo and it's dark, they've noticed that the light to the bathroom door, to the bathrooms are on, one or two of them, and the doors are opened. I don't know if there have been arrangements made that those doors should be locked and the lights turned off. But I do know that the police do drive down there and check the property more than once a night because I see them going down. So, I don't see any reason that the bathroom doors and the lights should be on and not locked because there are portages there if anyone needs to use the bathroom that's using, coming in from their boat. So, maybe when the officers go down to do their rounds down there after dark, maybe they could just lock those bathroom doors and shut the lights off if they see it. Unless there's some reason why those doors need to be opened and the lights on.
I mean, my, my preference would be they'd be secured at night. So, I'm sure that if you folks see that they're unlocked, it could be a good double check. But I'll talk to the director about making sure that they're secured before the day's out.
Because I know she's not there, you know, up until dark. So, and there's, there's no one else that would be down there to do that. So, so that was all I had.
The only thing I had is Floyd had already mentioned it about just before the quarry. That trailer sits back in and all the rubbish tires and everything, it's all over the place.
How do we make out all the geese?
I don't know yet.
They're there. And they seem to be coming back with vengeance.
You know, I see something the other day. I wouldn't believe it.
You would tell me about it.
Yeah, I didn't, I hadn't seen it anywhere else. I have a plane going in the, had some nice fake coy dog. And I asked, I says, "I don't remember ever seeing them here before." He said, "They haven't been."